Good evening. Good evening, I have 5:30 according to Verizon time, so we're going to call this meeting to order. I'd like to encourage you to turn your phone to silent or vibrate and then let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris, would you take the role, please?
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Berg?
Here.
Councilmember Dalby?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here. I'll need a approval of tonight's agenda, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
We always give citizens a chance for input, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to anything on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on to the first item, so Chris.
Resolution number 176 2021, accepting the renewal effective January 1, 2022, for the city's post-65 retiree medical supplemental and prescription plans carrier with Humana. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 176 2021.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Kayla, you're going to take this, Finance Director Kayla Mulder is going to give us some background.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. As you guys were aware, last year we switched companies from, to Humana for our post-65 retirees. This is a fully insured med sub-plan, and the renewal rate, so in your packet, we included your, the group Medicare rate sheet, the group Medicare plan design exhibits, and the renewal acknowledgement. The calendar year 2021 rate is currently at $209 a month, and the new rate would go up to $218.11 a month, so that's a $9.11 increase per month, starting January 1. This would mean for retirees, this would go up $3.64 for a single retiree, or $7.29 for the employee plus spouse part of that. This is still a $14.76 savings compared to the plan that we were on before the Humana plan with this increase. The updates for the 2022 calendar year are there are post-discharge meals, there are post-discharge transportation, and post-discharge personal home care. The essential, health essential kits that we did last year for those retirees, we will not be doing for 2022. That was just like a one-time thing to get them acclimated with the new system and how to do that. And acupuncture has been added for low back pain acupuncture, and that will start effective January 21, January 1, 2022. In total, we will actually be reducing this city's cost from calendar year 2021 to calendar year 2022 by $3,056.11 with this renewal.
Okay, you've got this packet in your information, are there any questions for Kayla, or any questions about the plan or coverage? Hearing none, then I would take the role.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
Project update for City Hall Improvements Project. Recommendation, open discussion.
Before we jump into this, I'd like to just say that this is a work session or a special session, so we'll be very relaxed and encourage a lot of give and take, and I do want to ask so that we give everybody a chance, so if I, if somebody has a question and wants to do a follow-up, let's give everybody a chance to go around and be sure they get their information answered. We'll have plenty of time to go through any detail that you want to ask for, so. With that, Larry, we'll call on you to give us some background and get us started.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The City of Tama contracted with Willett Hoffman and Associates to evaluate the existing heating and cooling systems currently utilized in City Hall. Our current boiler system has been repaired numerous times and is in need of replacement. The current system is thought to be about 90 years old. Several types of systems were evaluated based on staff's suggestion, suggested four plans which drive overall design requirements as related to zone heating and cooling. As part of the study, six HVAC systems were evaluated. Several of the overreaching goals included the desire to install a system that provided controllability and range temperatures within existing zones. A second major design feature in modern HVAC systems and tied to healthy work environment is the need or ability to incorporate air exchange rates by introducing outside fresh air into the conditioning units. Neither of these features are available with the existing system and are required by current code when updating and upgrading. A third consideration was a system that could be sized and installed that can readily be expanded as future phased remodeling occurs without requiring or minimizing the removal and replacement of recently installed systems. A major driving factor also that we wanted to look at was the need to review the entire building and identify and create a detailed list to meet the current ADA requirements and assign opinions of probable costs for those improvements. Based on the study and the design of the building, we would recommend designing the backbone utilizing HVAC System 6 and the needed ADA improvements that are required. Several additional factors considered for future phases including acoustical separation and an increased need for security enhancements throughout, which were flow separations. We've got our architect onsite, they will also go back through the original one. I think one of the things that occurred in the first presentation was if we were to build out the entire first floor, which wasn't really the intent, so they had just an overall number that it would cost if we did everything at one time, but what we're recommending is a phased approach, and that's where we want to discuss, do we want to go in based on funding that is available or will be available? Start with the heating cooling because they are currently separate, so we could do a heating system as a phase, come back in, do HVAC as a phase, and then do ADA. Also, we could actually divide the floors because they are independent from each other, especially on the ADA requirements. So based on funding, we could put together a package that would allow us, again, to pick and choose out of a multitude of projects that really don't overlap. It's first floor that becomes problematic or more challenging from a design standpoint and a construction standpoint, making sure that, again, our overall goal is not to install a system that then we have to remove portions, that's always something that we do not like to do. So that would be a challenge in the actual design, how do we phase it knowing at some point we want to get to this build-out, and that would be based on if grants are available or when they do become available or other funding options appear. So with that, I think I'll have Alan start recovering or reviewing the original presentation. What we had him do was pull out all the remodeling, what the estimates you have in front of you is what remains, and we could kind of maybe pick and choose what we'd like to do, if anything.
Okay.
So with that, Alan, would you like to come up and start the presentation? We do have it on overhead.
Probably we'll just go to those final remodeling plans, which is toward the end.
Alan, can you identify that as, your pages are numbered, so if you could identify that for us?
It's Appendix 9, but what the page is, it says A9 on there, I forget what the page is in the report. What I've asked to start with are the colored-up plans to kind of illustrate the use of the spaces by color coding them, and this, as Larry was indicating, this represents the total project. So the original budget that we had in the report, roughly $5 million bucks, covered all of the work that you'll see here on these colored-up plans, and then if, to contrast that, we can go back to a different set of plans that have just some highlighted areas to be easier to point out what the difference is between this revised budget that we are going to be talking about today and what we originally had. Now, if you look at this, you can see that most of the, on the first, on the basement is identified as purple, which is primarily storage, and the only place that we were really affecting actual room changes is in the two restrooms, the ADA restrooms for that level, and then you can see them in blue next to where the two stairs are, upper-left The first floor, this is where the most significant changes were, you can see in the yellow, that represents office type of occupancy, conference rooms, that sort of thing. You can see the blue ADA restrooms that we had identified, a back corridor for the employees, the big green front corridor representing establishing the historic original corridor that was there back when it served as post office, and then the few of the other rooms. Again, this is the total build-out concept here. Up here on this floor, again, you can see most of the spaces are identified as yellow, which represents the office and conference room spaces, the main corridor through the middle. On this floor, the only real changes, construction changes, if you will, we're creating ADA restrooms out of what you have right now. Still, women's on the left, men's on the right, but modifying the layout so that it served as an ADA restroom. Then finally, up on the upper floor, same thing, the two blue restrooms are being modified to be, to serve as ADA restrooms for the males and the females, and then the rest of the spaces were being left as is, very little structural modifications. The only difference in that is the little red area you see there, that's creating an area of refuge, that's a code-related item that we felt strongly you needed to do on this level, since you only otherwise had one way out of the building. Going back down, the other thing is creating an ADA ramp at the south end of the first floor, this comes up in this revised budget. You can see it in the pink all the way over to the right going down the side, that's creating a landing platform so you can go straight out and then down a ramp down to the front sidewalk and then over to the parking area, so that's your accessible route on Level 1. And then finally, up on Level 2, you can see a little pink area on the right, that's an area of refuge because you don't, if you have a handicapped person on this floor, they can either get out by the elevator over on the right, but over on the left, they don't have a second way out. That's their way out, and you have to equip that area, this has to do with the fire alarm system, have to equip that area with a, basically a push-button thing. So the fire department knows that somebody's on that landing waiting to be rescued. So that, and then the upper one that I indicated up on here, or up above on third floor, that area of refuge at the end of the, of the fire escape, both of those would have that feature to them. So that gives you a quick idea of what it was. Now, could we go back to, oh, wait, I've got it right here, never mind, I'll go back. Okay, these blue floor, these floor plans that have the blue kind of showed just the areas where we're actually doing construction in the building, and this, these will be easier to identify what we're showing with this revised budget. In the basement in the revised budget, all that we were considering was code-related items in terms of construction, and that was the two restrooms, and then the two vestibules that you see, creating vestibules at the bottom of the stairs. The vestibules are for basically separation in case you have a fire down there and you get smoke. Once a person gets to that exit, they are protected, they have a level of protection, a one-hour protection, so that they are at least out of smoke and out of harm's way to be able to get up and out of that area. So other, and then the big L-shaped area, that blue thing was for the revising that to make basically an IT shop down in the basement, but that's not in this budget. So that, that plus then in the boiler room, upper center part of this plan, the boiler room, we have to remove the boiler and replace that with a new heating system. On the second, or on the first floor, you can see where we had identified the two ADA restrooms basically right across from the kitchen, and on first floor in this revised budget, we were doing that, we were demolishing a little bit of area for those, basically gutting out, there's some storage rooms in there and so forth, we're gutting that out, making those two restrooms larger so that they can accommodate ADA stalls and that sort of thing. Putting in a new drinking fountain, electrical, the south ramp that I mentioned to you before, all the way to the right on the outside of the building, and then removing asbestos floor tile. So that's all that we were identifying on the first floor in this revised budget. On this floor, a little bit of area to be demoed out for the remodeling for the ADA restrooms, and you can see the two ADA restrooms that blew the upper part of that plan, remodeling the back corridor for the council chambers to provide for handicap accessibility back there, and a chairlift. The area of refuge that I described on the left side, just outside the entry door, a drinking fountain, and then some additional electrical feeding, feeders, this gets to Larry's comment about creating the backbone that we can build on at a future time, and revising that north entry vestibule to serve as a vestibule rather than just being open to the outside, basically adding doors to it. Then finally, up on the third floor, the ADA restrooms, chairlift for the engineering area, you can see that down in the bottom of the plan, the little blue spot there, the area of refuge for the end of the fire escape, the new drinking fountain, changing that exterior door to the emergency exit, right now that door opens out and you can't get to the area of refuge, so we'd have to change out the swing work so you can get out and still utilize the area of refuge. And then electrical, as we had mentioned before. So those are the only things that we were anticipating with this revised budget, basically they fall under the umbrella of code, ADA, which is code, and as Larry described, putting in the HVAC backbone. Now, one thing I will identify is that the backbone means that we've changed out all of the HVAC. Mike Rayhose is here, he's our mechanical engineer, and he can help decipher how we could further break that down if we had to, in other words, if we decided we wanted to just simply put in the heating side only for now, since you have some air conditioning in here for the time being, then put in the air conditioning at a later, in a later project, and so that we have those two, and maybe we don't do all of the ADA on a couple of the floors and we do them at a later time, too. There are ways to cut up the project and parcel it out so that we can get things achieved in a phased manner, it's just which way do we want to phase it. The total on this, including consulting fees, came out to basically $2.9 million. But again, that presumes that we're putting in the entire HVAC system, and on the first floor, what that would mean is we'd have all of the structure there ready to branch out to the revised floor plan on Level 1. That was quite a bit to throw at you, so maybe...
I might add a little just for clarity, we actually kind of stated it, but just for the general public, when we talk about, for instance, the electrical entry portion, you would size that for a total build-out. So you can see some prices in the basement, I think it was, yeah, I'm just going to round it at 64, about 110, but you would do that stuff up front before you started your HVAC, and then as you add on, you don't have to do that later if those systems are put in a phased approach. So I mean, again, back to what was stated, that you could chop it in, but we want to do it in a logical order to allow those future build-outs without going back doing a bunch of rework, and again, that's what we're concentrating on. So one of the things that we could do is say, okay, how much do we want to fund it? You know, maybe we have an idea of what is available, and we could kind of tailor as our group, okay, we could do this package through four things together under this, make that progress as we seek additional funding to be at grant or other sources.
If I may, just for clarification, Larry, so I try to understand the other gentleman, and I'm sorry, I forgot.
Al.
Al. So Larry, I thought I was following pretty well, that it could be just HVAC, it could be whatever, but when you said, what you just said, Larry, does that mean go back to actually getting started with some remodeling because of the HVAC?
Well, not necessarily, it depends if, and again, maybe if we start at the funding level, then we could come back and tailor what we could do for that funding and what order it would make sense. What I was stating, I just wanted you to understand, if we're doing $110,000 worth of entry, power entry, we want to make it sized appropriately for the entire build-out. We don't want to put in something that, oh, we've got to pull that out and increase the total amps that it's available for the total. We just, we don't want to back up in this, let's say we target a five-year build-out, you know, as a plan.
Yes.
We just want to make sure it's logical in the steps.
Okay, I understand that, thank you, thank you. Good segue, any other comments, questions, Mark?
Yeah, a few comments and then a quick question. I know that this has been a fairly well-talked-about project in the public here over the last couple of months as it's been brought up, and just as a point of order for the public, you know, this building is probably the central point of the community, and while we have spent a considerable amount of money on this building, there's obviously a lot more that can be done than we've seen over the last few years, what happens when you don't invest money on keeping buildings up, like the beach, the fire department, the airport, we've had to invest millions of dollars into those areas to do stuff that could have been done for a portion of the cost prior. I think that looking long-term, this price tag is a little bit lofty, but just looking at the heat system as an example, if it was put in in 1910, however much money was put in in 1910, I'm sure is a considerable amount in today's dollars, and we clearly got our return on that investment the city has, so. And looking at what needs to be done still, you know, I look at the lack of ADA requirements that this building currently has, the lack of proper safety with not having the proper safety escape routes, you know, we're looking at COVID right now, and we don't have proper air turnover in this building. Those are the things that I look at when I'm seeing this price tag that makes it more feasible to me that it needs to be done. You know, the construction is, Councilmember Myers and I had this discussion earlier, as a matter of fact, about the construction piece of this project, you know, you can't just, this is a historic building, you can't just put lumber up, you have to preserve the historical integrity of the building. So there's things in this, in this building just aren't the cheapest thing in the world to do, but it is the proverbial crown of the city, so we need to make sure that we're doing whatever we're doing properly. And all of that stuff leading up to my question, with the price tag that we have here, you talk about phasing that project out, instead of doing all of it at once, or, you know, the HVAC and AC at once, is there an additional cost that's incurred by phasing those out instead of doing it all at the same time? Because my logical brain tells me that if you're bringing construction crews in here twice, you're going to create more expense instead of just knocking it out all at once.
Well, your logic is correct, that is what happens, you know, what kind of a premium do you pay on it, it just depends on how far apart the projects are spread, and, you know, what kinds of phasing approach, approaches that we take, what kind of steps that we take. As Larry was identifying, there are some things that we have to put in now so that you aren't stepping on your toes and incurring additional expense, like the incoming electrical, the base boilers, for instance, Mike would be sizing those to serve the entire project. Now, boilers nowadays, and I'm getting out of my pay grade here, so Mike might want to jump up, but you can, you can nowadays, for that big monster you got down there now, maybe have three or four smaller boilers that are set up to cycle on and cycle back off, so maybe you only buy two of them now, because all we're doing is a portion of the heating system, or you buy all four of them now and we don't do the air conditioning system. But again, you're trying to step it, but in a smart manner so that you're not incurring a lot of additional expense, but you're never going to get around having to mobilize construction crews more than once, there's no way around that. What does that account for? It could account for like 5% or 10% of the total bill when you get all said and done, I'm just kind of theorizing here, but it might be something like that, and it depends on how far apart you separate the projects.
So I guess a curiosity of mine would be, what burden does the city bear of doing that versus the cost of financing the entire project all at once?
Boy, that's kind of tough, could you presume that, you know, you got a five, just for sake of argument, a 5% penalty, if you will, for phasing the project and having to re-mobilize a crew from one year to the next, but your interest rate on your bonds is three, I mean, you know, you got some savings there if you did it that way, but your bonds are spread out over 20 years.
Right.
That's one of those kind of things, so, you know, it's hard for me to answer exactly, you know, what the best scenario is, it just depends on what you think you'd be able to fund initially and how much that we can get out of the way so that you're not, again, stepping on your toes as you shift from one of the projects onto the next. You know, your scenario about, you know, the, talking about how old the building was and so forth, and taking care of it, I've shared that with, I've done a lot of work with schools, the same thing, you know, is true with schools. Usually the buildings, you know, they open them up and they just are not able to fund the maintenance of the buildings over time, but the second thing, the hidden thing that happens to them, it isn't just that, you know, they're not able to maintain the systems like they should, the problem is that over a period of time, 10 years for instance, codes change and technology changes, and a boiler, you know, that you bought back in 1910 might cost X dollars, but nowadays you buy that same boiler, and because of the change in times, the boilers are much more complicated, and to provide the same service, you know, they're going to cost a lot more. So there's a lot of things that come into the cost of upgrading a building that had been built in 1910 to bring it up to speed now. And of course, life safety is a big thing, we talked about air changes in a building, that never used to be worried about because you just open the window, you know, well, you can imagine what it's like opening the window when it's 20 below outside, you know, it just doesn't quite work. You get an air change, but it's a cold air change, so the codes and life safety and those kinds of things all evolve over time, and that's what feeds a lot of the costs that otherwise you might, you know, if you had an opportunity in a real, you know, ideal world, you'd have an opportunity... in a, in a real, uh, you know, ideal world, you'd have an opportunity every two or three years to upgrade your building to meet, uh, code and life safety issues. But, uh, in real, you know, real life, that just doesn't happen, you know. And so you end up getting a lot of things grandfathered in. Uh, the combination of ADA, you know, a great example of that is the, the two, uh, areas of refuge I identified. That never used to be in the code back in seventies, eighties, but then when ADA hit the code and, uh, things have evolved, uh, from, uh, life safety in terms of, uh, fire escapes and that sort of thing, this idea of area refuge, somebody that's incapacitated on a particular floor has to be able to let somebody know that they're stuck there, that they're stuck at least in a landing. You can get them out of harm's way onto a landing, but somebody's got to know that they're there. So those kinds of things, uh, again, that's kind of the hidden part of how buildings evolve and how the costs, in a sense, go up. Thank you.
A couple of questions. Do we have any ideas on, uh, know if we upgrade these systems, if there are rebates through energy companies, uh, that would then offset some of this cost? If we have any ideas of what those might be?
I don't know if we know the dollar amount. We know they exist. I don't know, standing here, if I can tell you percent of your, your heating units and stuff based on efficiency. That'd be something that we'd have to research, the specifics.
And what year the rebates are getting less and less? You know, there may be good, maybe favorable rebates now, but you can't say in three years when it actually happens and when you actually do the installation, or maybe push back the cooling later, what's going to be there with, uh, you know?
At the City of Cedar Rapids, we were able to take advantage of a, a few pretty good-sized rebates, primarily on the lighting side of things. And, uh, I think in some of the systems too. I don't.
Yep, we were.
Yeah.
And I know we've talked about it, uh, I think even back when we started doing first studies, uh, in 2018, but reiterating again for the public, uh, is there any kind of scale of knowing or any estimates on change in energy consumption? Uh, if we were to go with the recommendations here, uh, what kind of cost we'd be seeing?
You're, you're, there won't be savings because you're only air conditioning half the building. So when we like say right now, you don't have air conditioning on second floor, they're all using shaker units and same to the lower level stuff, so that you will see an increased cost as big as you are conditioning it. Also, there is cost to provide ventilation air, heating cooling the ventilation air. So, you know, we can predict the, the assumed energy consumption, but it's going to be more than where it is now because of the vision.
Uh, this one's more for Kayla. Uh, knowing that we've been, uh, seeing, we've been, uh, seeing bond rates being a lot lower these days, I'm going to assume that we are thinking they will go back up at some point. What goes down has to come back up, right, in terms of bonds? Uh, so obviously you don't have a crystal ball, but, uh, would you see a rationale for trying to do more now while we see those interest rates lower than trying to piecemeal it out over time? I know it's a, but, you know, just trying to get some ideas of strategy.
Sure. I mean, I, I don't, again, have a crystal ball as to when rates will start going up. Um, you know, they're kind of all over the place right now, and it depends on what we're bonding for. Um, you know, if we do another, um, CIP bond next year, like is planned, um, you know, it'd make sense for us to do it at that point in time rather than waiting two more years after that or doing it within the same fiscal year. They don't, you know, it's, it's harder to get that done. Um, you know, but we already do have some of the funds available, um, that was approved on, uh, this current CIP. Uh, and some of those funds, well, all of those funds need to be spent by, um, June 30th of 2022. Um, and again, some of those were, uh, to address some of our ADA compliance and our entrance, um, issues that, uh, we're experiencing that, you know, is on this plan. Um, but yeah, I mean, I would rather borrow the money now, um, at, when, you know, we have historically low interest rates than wait a couple of years from now when they're up and, um, you know, you're still paying on it over 20 years or so.
Uh, and then knowing if we, obviously we're not voting tonight on anything, but if we were to move forward with this plan, is there a sort of timeframe on getting the ball rolling? Uh, if we, you know, start with this plan now, uh, I'm trying to identify other maybe grant sources for some of these smaller things. HVAC obviously isn't really something we're going to see, uh, grant funding unfortunately on. Uh, I wish we could. But, uh, for some of the other things, uh, that we see with the doors and ADA improvements, uh, is there kind of a timeframe of when we'd kind of hit the go button from this meeting going forward?
Well, um, you know, we have been identifying some grants that would be available. There's some, um, stuff out there with the Department of Energy. Uh, there's also, um, a local Farnie grant, uh, that we could use some of the funding that we already have available for those cash matches. And if we wanted to go forward with, um, some of the Iowa HRDP funding or the Jeff Rice, uh, stuff out of the Des Moines area, um, you know, it just depends on where we want to go. And I think that that's kind of the direction that we're wanting council to help us with, um, answering tonight as well, um, on how to use the funds that we already have. And then for planning for our CIP for next year, uh, what do we need to, to do for that?
And seeing, um, looking at what we have in CIP currently, there's, uh, funds for the roof and exterior masonry. That's part of what we're doing or has been going on now, right?
Yeah, the exterior masonry, um, that, I believe that is completed. Um, I'm not sure what has to be done for the, the roof or what, um, the expense of that is going to be. But, um, from the funds that were borrowed in 2017 and this current CIP cycle, we have about eighty-seven thousand dollars left there. Um, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
So I was, so we're still parsing that out from what's essentially left in the CIP for what we have on the sheet of what we're saying tonight?
Yep. Yeah, those are current balances through August.
And then, um, one, my last question, I promise. Uh, on the plans, there was the chairlift for the north side. Is that correct? Is, would that, that would be an outside exposure? Is that what that I was trying?
I, I think that's just a, you build up from that first step and you make a landing area where they can actually go out and retreat, and they just have to have an ability to call.
Okay, so we're not talking like a lift?
No.
I was super confused. I was confused on the list.
We have talked about, is that a possibility? Instead of coming in here trying to do a long ramp access to the, the dice area, is, they do make different types of lifts. Would that work in the back hallway to lift them up and come through that door without moving doors? And, uh, there's a lot of stuff to work out when you do these type of studies. You know, it's just a general high-altitude view. And then when you get into the details, you look at possible options. There's a lot of neat lifts out there. Uh, can we make one work? Probably. Uh, that's what that was. And then there's one in engineering. If we're going to access our half-floor, we have to put something there.
Yeah, that's.
We like it from a staff perspective because when we're moving desks or filing cabinets or equipment, we can use that instead of dragging staffs.
Oh, you can't, you can't use that.
Yeah.
I live with the elevator engineer. I can tell you that's a no.
I do want to circle back. When you get into the energy efficiency savings, we know that any type of, uh, hot water boiler that we put in regardless of the final type, uh, there, it's, it's, its raw efficiency is a lot higher than that current one that's in place. Will it offset the use of the additional conditioning units? Probably, but we couldn't sit here and tell you, hey, we're going to save 25%. I mean, some of the stuff that we've installed, especially at the water treatment plant, we've, we've seen very, uh, very high returns on some of those efficiencies. And that's when you get into the design, you could probably have a better idea of where we would be.
Larry, could you go a little further? Maybe, Mike, you could respond to this as engineering. You're talking about that alternate hybrid six, as I recall, and that's a hot water system? That's not steam?
It's refrigerant.
Refrigerant.
So what happens is that, let's say, for example, we have, as you know, where it gets your home, when it cycles on and off, it goes full bore off and on. With the variable friction flow, the compressors operate when they needed load at the spaces. So say you have three rooms, five ton, five ton, five ton. It's only needing maybe three tons. It'll ram down and only provide the power needed for the actual load, not run full out.
Sure.
So that's where you got savings there.
Does it also then require use of the piping that's already in the building for that refrigerant?
It'll be all new, kind of like your piping here runs to the air conditioner outside. There'll be the same kind of concept, which newer technology systems that'll be sitting outside, that'll still be line sets in, but there won't be, let's say, for example, forty zones, there won't be, won't be forty air conditioners out there.
Okay.
There are ones that manifold together and that one line sec of fridge coming in, and it branches off into all the other units. So you can share the load that you need. Uh, and in some cases, you may find out that, uh, before you bring on the heating, you may have a room that's kind of a little bit cold. It can heat and cool at the same time off that refrigerant system. Even though it's domely cooling, you may have a room that is on the south side, you know, and it's, and it's kind of cold. They can heat that without going to heating mode.
Oh, I had one more, sorry.
Sure.
But I remembered. Uh, Kayla, you said that the funds that were on this existing CIP need to be spent by, uh, next, mid next year, right? So is that something with what the, um, the scope is here that those items, uh, or some of those items could get, be started by then, uh, in terms of like the ADA improvements and things? Or would that be something we need to hold out to do all kind of in one?
Well, well, the first step probably would be to come up with actual construction plans. So I don't know if it's, it's, you know, we look for additional funds to start, you know, the architectural fees to start getting plans, you know, and then come up with possible dates for letting, which would be based, of course, on funding. So we could coordinate possible funding timelines along with construction. Uh, that, because that wouldn't take us a long ways in, if we just wanted to design ADA. One of the things that was discussed and pointed out, uh, to do the ADA, you might be relocating heating within one of those rooms. So the design really needs to include, okay, where's the ultimate buildout? You do that first. Even if you don't do that, uh, ADA buildout, you might have to put in temporary heat. That would all be determined in that first set of plans, and that's your first, that's your first goal.
Thank you.
Matt?
I got a question for Kayla, more or less, I think. Um, uh, what is your plan? I mean, what, what options do we have? I mean, we can tell you a bunch of stuff, but if we don't have funding, or if we need to wait, or how do we bond, or can we bond at all? And then, you know, write for grants during the process and pay it back sooner? What is your plan, or what do you think would be the best avenue for us to go? Um, because we've heard the disadvantages of waiting and phasing it out and the advantages of phasing it out, which I don't have an issue with at all. Uh, but is there a better way? Is there a best way to go about this? Bond rates, all that into one equation. What should we do?
Well, first, I think that we need a, um, plan, a, a full construction plan so we can apply for, um, some of these grants in the, um, plan and the, um, renovation schematics that, um, we've already been provided as a good start. But for instance, um, some of the grants that we're finding need a, um, planning and historic structure report. And once we have that, um, planning and historic structure report, then, uh, we can apply for bigger, better grants most of the time. Um, and there's, um, a process that you can apply for even that report getting paid for. I think it's up to 300 or maybe 500,000 dollars, um, to get that report paid for, uh, during that plan. Um, so once we, you know, have that, and, and we have a plan, um, but I think that there's more requirements that go along with having that historic structural report done, if those are the types of grants that we're going after. And, um, what we're finding are those are the, the bigger dollar amount grants. And, um, I mean, Alan's had some experience with these and, you know, they use some of these grants to pay for the, um, City Hall old post office building in Cedar Rapids that they had done as well. Um, as far as, um, financing and funding, you know, we'll start doing that for our next CIP plan here in the next couple of months. And so I think that it would be advantageous for us to, next year, when we're doing that bonding, to do the bonding at that point in time. Hopefully the rates are, are still low. Um, but in the, in the meantime, um, you know, I, I think that we've all known, um, for a while that our four entrance doors need to be done. And I don't know if we can get some, um, sort of plan together as to what those need to look like or be done, um, to take those back to what they're supposed to look like historically, all that kind of stuff to get them done for security reasons. Uh, so that's kind of the, the main thing that's on, um, my list are those four entrance doors.
So the historic structure report, pending what we got to already spend in this around the CIP, plus, you know, what's been presented, which is, you know, you know, start with the, you know, heating HVAC, that type of stuff, ADA compliance, always important. Uh, historic structure report needs to be probably pretty close next on the list, right? Because that would tell us what grants we can actually get to. And then we'd have a better financial picture. Is that kind of what we're?
Yeah, I mean, and we just need to know if we can start applying for grants or not.
Right.
Um, I mean, like I said, there's a, um, Department of Energy grant right now, um, available for up to, well, I think it starts out at 500,000, um, but it wants to know RFIs and a whole bunch of information along those lines. Um, you know, there's local money available that could help us, um, restore the entrances in the woodwork and the entrances that would, you know, go a long ways with, um, making those four entrances look, um, better historically, but also getting the security in those four entrances that we need to get done. Just things like that. We just, we just need to know if we can move forward with applying for this and, um, you know, work with engineering and, uh, the plan on what's available now too.
Well, I would say just in the final comment, um, we know this needs to be done. The entire project needs to be done. Um, and whatever order and whatever timing that is, that's, I would rely heavily on staff to give those recommendations. And, uh, it's not like we're going to, you know, be able to not do this stuff, you know, it's going to go away. We're going to have to get this done. And dragging out too long, you know, over years and years, having construction crews in here and disrupting staff isn't ideal either. And so I would say, you know, follow the process and the plan that you've got, get the story report, and then get her done, you know? So thank you for the presentation of the information.
Sure. So, um, I guess when Alan started and talked about the revised plan at the 2.9 million, and I thought that included, um, the HVAC, the whole heating HVAC system, uh, included all the ADA components, and I thought it included the, uh, entrances, maybe not. But, but I think I could go along with the revised, and I was curious over what kind of a timeline that would be. But, um, I am concerned, and I know I've been on the council long enough, that I'm going to hear, well, Bob, what you're bringing up, though, that's different money. But the public out there sees that two years ago, we laid off firemen, we laid off policemen, we always have money for this or that. Uh, but we always have more demands than we have money for. So even though I understand, uh, and I was glad Larry clarified for me, yes, I think we need to get all the wiring, uh, the conduit, the piping, everything that we want to do for the complete project, we need to go ahead and get those. And I, I thought, Alan, that you indicated that, that would work into that 2.9. But, but I, for the public, I would much rather, even though I understand rates and everything else, um, uh, and I, I know we brought CIP money this year and millions and, and we, some of it we had labeled, maybe I think still some we didn't, so that we could fit it in elsewhere later and stuff like that. But accountability, uh, even though in the long run, it would, it, it'll cost more, at least the public would understand that we're making a good faith effort and we will phase it in to get it done right. But that's just me. Thank you. Other comments?
I guess, I guess I have a couple of questions, and I'm coming into this kind of late, so I apologize. Um, when you decided to size the heating and air conditioning units, how did you determine what size you needed? Was it done with the idea that like the first floor eventually at some point would be put back to the original with the high ceilings and stuff? Because if it wasn't taken into account and you're doing a heating and air conditioning for the existing space the way it is now, I wouldn't think that would be adequate if the goal ultimately is to put everything back as original as possible. So how was that determined?
That load, the envelope loss, which means the window That load, the envelope loss, which means the windows, the wall, is going to be there whether it's open or not. But there is more infiltration when you do that, but that is accounted it. The system that we have is going to be probably sized that will have a little bit of buffer in there, just for not even today's function. You may change function later on, add more conference rooms, add more this, that. You don't want to ever decide right to the bare bones with just enough diversity. We don't know where, what functions you have in this building that's going to happen in 10 years, that we don't want to be kind of self-short and then have to add more infrastructure in. So it will be enough to cover the future, you know, historic preservation side and some little cost to, you know, do some future planning changes. But once again, it's not going to operate at a high level of cost. It's going to operate just to what you're using today. Does that make sense?
And if I could add to that, oh, yeah, there it is. You see the green area there? That's really the only place where we had really high ceilings. We have opportunities to have lower ceilings for the rest of the yellow. You know, you don't want to take it down too low, because those are pretty good sized rooms. So you're going to want them at about 10 feet, but that's about where it is right now. 10, 11 feet, something like that. Just the green areas is where we were going to go up to the higher, up to the original plaster ceiling where it was.
But I guess my question is still, if, say, down the road, the plan was to really do first floor and put the building back like it was with all high ceilings, so you keep the integrity of the building, then is this heating and air conditioning system going to be sized large enough to handle that, so you're not having to turn around, like you said, to add a whole bunch more units in four or five years?
Whether you have a ceiling in or not, it's not going to change the load.
Okay.
Plain and simple.
And then the other question I had is, how would you envision putting in all this heating and air conditioning system in this building when everybody still has to work here? What kind of plan would be put together to like move departments around temporarily while their space was being heated and air conditioned, renovated? Or what's, how would you go about doing that when everybody still has to work here unless the plan is to move City Hall somewhere for a few months while this is all being put in? How would that work?
That's actually part of the development of the plans. We had initial conversations where you do have to have services still provided. You have to keep records still available to the public. You have personnel records that still have to be moved but kept confidential. That's a lot of the backseat discussions. That's part of the design. You know, how do you move these people around? Is there temporary offices in other location? Are they combined? All that would be determined as the plans were developed.
Okay. We're hoping that, you know, with the system we're doing, doesn't have huge, big duct work and that kind of stuff. It is a refrigerant system, so they're more self-contained. So it plays down how much disruption happens. But it will be, like I say, get into office for a week or so to get some stuff done, which is trying to find a swing space or air to maybe develop that. We use as a transitional period why people shuffle around as renovation is done. And part of that, too, is built into why we have some contingencies in the budget. We don't know what that is yet. So, you know, that's part of why there is some unforeseen dollars until we get the plan past schematic level into a phasing document.
So I noticed that you just triggered something, Mike. The contingency did drop considerably in this revised plan from the original plan. Is that part of that, that, that once you get a plan put together, you can be more exact about what your needs are going to be then?
We, we usually, that was, and I'll have, you know, Al joke Ben is that, when we were seeing everything and seeing the prices skyrocket and next up, we as companies had that to be in your safe benefit. We dropped a little because we're seeing the pricing back down a little bit, too. And, you know, being more comfortable with design, comfortable with the design that we have developed at the time, we're shuffled different pools. In general, we took some of the money out of the construction contingency and put what we call design contingency, you know, which, you know, in the, putting the job together, it's a, I think it's saying maybe it dropped down 10%, but it's not changed too much. There is $1 amount that we have for overhead and profit, that went from 25, that we pushed into a different pool of funding, which is what we would call design contingency. Ideally, as you do a design, as you get it finalized, the price changes, but the contingency goes down. Overhead profit stays the same, depending upon the competitive nature of the, you know, where you're at in the, you know, bidding process, but you still maintain that such contingency, because why? That's based on building type, you know, what we, what the unforeseen conditions are. The shuffling and then planning, that's where the one where we try to move that too much. But I think me and Al decided that, hey, we can bring it down a little bit, you know, from the overall scope of the project.
Our discussions were, you know, towards the fact that we've got a more defined scope. And the defined scope is primarily code-related ADA and mechanical electrical. So that overall contingency that was 50%, we dropped that to 30. The other two contingencies that we kind of broke it out, Mike and I had this discussion, rather than having one block of 25% for overhead and profit, we have a 10% design contingency and a 15% overhead and profit. What's the design contingency? That's basically looking at the costs of materials, looking at the types that we might bring in there, realizing that we might want to have Model A instead of Model B. Those kinds of things all factor into the design contingency.
Also, too, the type of construction, mechanical contingency, maybe 30, but historic preservation is 50, because we don't know what takes it. Do rebuild some of those elements that can swing quite drastically. And so since we define the scope more mechanically, we brought the overall one down.
Sure. Sorry. So if I am reading this correctly, the revised scope does not include a remodel of first floor?
Correct, other than the ADA restrooms.
Okay.
And, and the ramp on the south end.
Okay, all right. So I know that was something that was talked about at the last meeting, and that hadn't been discussed too much. Some of the things that we were talking about with that, and the purpose of that remodel, we're looking at the efficiency, safety, security, accessibility, functionality. We've got, and not to make this sound like first world problems, but we have employees that don't have, working in a private space, you know, be able to have a phone conversation. The city clerk is in the middle of the floor, can't have a conversation with a council member if a question comes up. You know, so there's, just to see some of those aspects, the layout of the whole floor plan is not conducive to an efficient working environment. There is absolutely no security. I know we've talked about concealed carry and the allowing for employees to be able to carry. This is one of those things that can also easily be done to help protect the safety and security of employees from a personal level, but also documents and other things, stopping anybody from walking right into somebody's office and, you know, not being able to get your work done, or maybe even cause some kind of physical harm. So I think there's, there's a lot of things that still need to be looked at. And, and that's, as I kind of stated, the second phase of it, knowing whatever HVAC thing we're going to do, we need to know what the final plan is going to look like. I'm not saying we have to spend all of that money today, but in order to know what your end solution is going to get, we need to know what that's going to look like. And so I'm a little disappointed to see that this doesn't include that as part of it. The other part, though, is we had six systems here to look at. And maybe the council is good with the recommendation for system six. I've got no problem with that. I think the hybrid sounds like a great option. But I think that was one of the things that we're going to need to decide, is which of these systems to move forward with, and then what is that end, end City Hall going to look like? I think restoring it to the historic look has a lot of value to it from a pride, community pride perspective, from a visual aspect. I know when I drive by the building, it looks like a great building, and then I see these air conditioners sticking out of the side of the building. And it's, it attracts just a little bit from that. That said, you know, we don't have, not that we necessarily need it, the air conditioning on tonight, you know, we've heard that. When you have the AC, you can't run it in this during a meeting because it's so loud. And I would mention that at the last meeting. Having more efficient systems will allow for that better comfort and control, the outside air, all of those things play into the employee experience and being more productive as individuals. And so I just, I don't want the council to lose sight of that aspect of it tonight, too. Well, you mentioned that now, Phil. I was under the assumption that we still had the entire project scope in our sights, but we were just focusing in on this portion of it right now. Is that what we're doing, or are we just scrapping the remodel and going just with this?
That was an option that we put together just to make you understand. You could do it in phases. Yes, there's additional cost. It'd be very similar to the sewer separation. You know, we know we have $100 million worth of work. We're not going to build it one year, one year from a funding standpoint. So that's the point we were trying to make. Now, if it's available and we can do it all, that's fantastic. But if we even phase it, you know, that gives us an opportunity to go in and still apply for grants for certain phases of it. Now, the historical study, of course, is something they have to have to incorporate in their designs, and it's all the hoops and stuff that they would have to incorporate in their designs.
Well, going back to what Councilmember Johnson was saying, you know, sizing things right for stuff, I think we need to keep that remodel in our plan and size and go forward with that being the ultimate goal, is to get to that point. I hope that's still in our sights, because we definitely need that for all the reasons Phil spoke about. So I'm okay with going forward with what we have laid out here, as long as we're keeping that in our sights, and that is our end goal. That's just what I was trying to clarify.
Well, I think that was our end goal, what we were trying to lay out, that there are options to get there to where you didn't have to do it all in one.
Right.
Bonding cycle, if that's what council wanted to do. Again, it's hard to weigh, what will it cost you if you break it down? That's really pretty hard to quantify.
And, and Matt, that's what I thought, what you're saying. I thought what we were talking here was possibly phasing.
And also, too, to reiterate, our system, ventilation system, and amount of zones we're providing, is intended to match what we want in the future. It may be, I'll open an office down there now with one thermostat. It'll probably have six thermostats to match what the game plan is, but different spots that we relocate later on and not re-scrap or rebuild all over again. And now, and possibly even move a unit, have it in a spot that's going to be future corridor in the future, but maybe above an area, you know, we may move some duct work and diffuser, but don't change the system. So that's part of the design is taking an exaggeration down the road.
Okay, very good. Other questions, comments, concerns?
I guess I have one other question. If the $2.9 million revised plan was approved, what would be your estimate at this point as to how long it would take to accomplish all that? Because I assume if you put in the heating and air conditioning system, you'd be putting the air conditioning in during the heating season, and you'd put the heating system in during the air conditioning season?
Well, I, let's just say we made that decision today. It's going to take us between two and three months, I think, to put together CDs that are available to bid. You get them bid, that takes another month, a month and a half, depending on requirements for that. And so that puts us into February, say, that you could sign a contract and get the contractor out here. This, in the, in the revised amount that we show, the $2.9 million, that would be about, that'd be a good year's worth of work. And it all depends on how fast the components can be, you know, obtained. Boilers are always a long lead item. There's a few other things that are a long lead item. But the rest of it, I think you can probably get to it, and I'll let Mike talk a little.
The biggest one is the heating side. We have to get it done in the summertime. We can do, our intent is to keep this unit in while we're doing our system. We're not going to just gut all the cooling. We want to swap out as we go, so that nothing builds that down for a long time, maybe be one system, two, three systems as we incorporate it. It may be disruptive, put some ventilation air in, but we don't need to switch over cooling in the winter time. Our intent is that we may even do it in the summertime if they can deal with, you know, two weeks, fall and spring, where it's mild temperatures, it's not going to be over, over challenging. And in some cases, we bring in temp units, put in a winter air conditioner for two weeks while they're hooking things up, you know, too, if that's necessary, just so that we're not forcing people on top of each other in a building to get it done in three months.
And if, and if you ended up putting in the new boiler, that I assume all those huge asbestos pipes and stuff that are in the basement, now that would all be taken out and new size, piping and stuff will be put into new system.
Unless you want to stay.
No, thank you.
No, that will be taken out, you know, so that you're not having, it'll be more spacious. You're not going to have the head dingers, you know, that we're seeing there. There may be duct work, because we do have to apply ventilation air to go in that floor and up, but they're not going to be big insulated pipes.
Any other questions, comments? Well, this has been very helpful. I appreciate the extra detail and breakout of the finances. And I think, as Councilman Delby said, we want to keep the overall project in our scope and see how we can get there. So, okay. Is there anything else, counsel, you want to bring up or call the attention staff? Yes.
Yeah, so one thing that I wanted to bring up, and I know City Administrator Raff and I have talked about this on a couple of occasions, and just trying to, you know, learning from some of our, our past issues with our limits to be able to discuss items and keeping in good spirit of the, the idea of quorum. I think that at some point in the near future, we really need to talk about the situation that we have going on with the fire department. I know we have had discussions with the Toma Regional Health Foundation on the issues that they have had for staffing for the ambulance service that we've had to have firefighters helping out with, with away from their primary duties as firefighters. And I know that we have a couple of folks out on light duty. I'm, I'm starting to get concerned about, number one, the burnout from the overtime that the fire department is having. At some point, I have to assume that that burnout's going to cause some safety issues as well, and maybe ultimately down the road, some possible attrition. So I just, again, in keeping in spirit of quorum, I think that we need to have a healthy conversation about that particular department at some point in the very near future.
Okay, very good. We can certainly add that to the agenda. Any other issues? I did put a letter in your box today regarding some future funding issues, and I'd like you to read it and give some feedback to Phil or me in terms of working with our public safety department. And that is just a suggestion at this point. There's nothing been decided or agreed upon. We're in the very preliminary stages, but it's, timing wise, it's going to be very critical to get something done here very, in the very near future. So if you haven't had a chance, you just got in your box today, so I don't expect you to have digested that today. Anything else? Okay, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Burr?
Yes.
Councilmember Delby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes. 639. Thank you all, and good night.